Tonight, we have a relatively short agenda. Are we rolling? Somebody out there in Cyberland, please ping me. Let me know that they can hear, see, smell, anything else they'd like to do. Okay. First of all, welcome, everyone. Glad everyone that came could make it. It's now 6:31, and I call the Castle Hills Regular City Council Meeting to order and determine whether a quorum is present. I also would like, a quorum is present? We have two people signed up on these citizens to be heard, non-agenda items, which is, is there anybody else besides Quentin Baker? Or Stephen Ackley, who would like to speak on non-agenda items? Okay, and I'm assuming that nobody signed up for agenda items, Minnie? Okay. All right. We're gonna have the invocation tonight, and by Mr. Pinkston, Castle Hills Eagles.
There you go. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we come to you in the mighty and the matchless name of the Lord Jesus Christ, in this time of Thanksgiving, and before we all get away for the holidays, we're just thankful to be a part of this great community here in Castle Hills, and God, for just the life we're living, the people who are here, and just the spirit that there is, that so many places aspire to, but we found to be true in our home. And God, I just pray that tonight, that we would, just citizens and our city leaders, city fathers, and city staff would work together in a really unified way to take one more set of steps to making this the best place in South Texas to live. So we just love you so much, and thank you for being together tonight, and bless these folks, bless our mayor and the city council, and give them the mind that they need to make the decisions, and to come to the consensus that they need to lead us. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston. Okay, next, we are honored this evening to again have the presentation of colors by our own Alamo Area Council of Boy Scouts. A.J., thank you for bringing the scouts in, and would you all like to step forward, please? For the pledge of allegiance?
May the audience, please, rise. Color guard, attention. Color guard, halt. Scout salute. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Color guard, retreat. Color guard, halt. Color guard, dismissed. Audience, you may be seated.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. We'll see you at the next meeting. Acknowledgements and recognitions? None. Proclamations? None. Citizens to be heard on non-agenda items.
Howdy, council. Quentin Baker, 304 Foxall Lane. Under acknowledgements, I think we forgot National Night Out, and acknowledge everybody who came out on a rainy evening and joined us for a good time, and all the city staff, great to see them out, and Peter Bellis for bringing his band out in the rain and playing for us throughout it all, all right? Reason for speaking this evening is on the Basis School, actually to provide you with some news, some update, that I think the city should be aware of. It's come to our attention that the progress on development of the school in Chavino Park is not going well. What we've learned so far is that there's really been no announcements to the Basis parents at all of a groundbreaking or any progress. They've been through two contractors now. They terminated one, and the second one terminated because the construction schedule was too aggressive to meet. So that's not going well. As far as the second contractor is aware, they have not yet received their building permits. So that's a bit troublesome, and we're not at all sure that they've closed on the property yet. That is just unclear, all right? So trouble afoot in Chavino Park here as it concerns Basis. Another bit of news, and publicly available are the meeting agendas for the Basis Board, Basis Texas Board. They had a June 17th meeting, at which an agenda item was amending the agreement with the Castle Hills First Baptist Church, amending the lease. Bring that to your attention, because that lease is an attachment to the city's settlement agreement on the lawsuit. So if there is, in fact, an amended lease, I think it behooves the city to get a copy of whatever amended lease is, because it is part of our settlement agreement, and I think it really behooves us to be aware of any changes that are taking place with regard to that lease. It'd certainly be good to get some clues as to what might be going on, all right? Okay. Now, with regard to the settlement agreement, just a reminder, there's a milestone date, July 21st of 18, that's the first year of the two-year agreement. After that, there is a one-year extension included in the agreement, if certain conditions are met and the extension is requested, okay? So I think it's prudent to have a bit of a reminder on what those conditions are, so we don't trip into a situation where an amendment is requested and we don't hold their feet to the fire to satisfy the requirements, the conditions, okay? Just real quickly, looking at the actual amendment agreement, says the extension is granted if Castle, Basis provides to the city, no longer, later than July 1st of 18, written documentation asserting and demonstrating Basis One has closed on or owns title to real property for the permanent charter school, or signed a lease to relocate the charter school campus. Two, needs additional time to complete development to open the new charter school facility. And three, the additional time needed is realistically estimated to mean not more than July 1st of 2019, okay? So basically, just a reminder that there are conditions to be met. It's not an automatic extension, and that if, in fact, they come forth, I think we need as a city to require they satisfy all three conditions. So with this all in mind, I've got three action items that suggest to us as a city, so we don't get caught blindsided by any of these actions. First, request a copy of an amended lease with Castle Hills First Baptist Church, if it was amended. We won't know unless we inquire. We certainly know that they had it on their agenda for a board, board action item. Second, ensure that the city obtains copies of all the required documentation in that list that I just read to you. And then, thirdly, if we do grant an extension, I'd like to see a process wherein it has to come before council, for council to deliberate on it and fully vet out that extension before it's adopted, not just an administrative extension that's granted. So that's what I have for you tonight, council. Just thought we needed to share the news and provide some reminders, okay?
Thank you, Quentin. As you know, we can't address that, but directly. Mr. Van de Wally, would you make sure that we get that on the calendar backed up by Minnie, J.R.? Would you also get involved in that and make sure we get with the gentlemen? And all three of us, copy me on the main calendar, please, as far as those dates, and exactly what Mr. Baker was talking about. Thank you, Quinn. Okay, next is Stephen Ackley.
Stephen Ackley, 118 West Castle Lane. This follows on a little bit from what Quentin was talking about, because I think, in a sense, the handwriting is on the wall, that we probably will be in a case where we'll be, have an additional year on the Basis School at that property. What I wanted to particularly address is some of the traffic and other situations that have, that are observed right now, and, you know, I think that these, you know, are gonna segue into the future, and I hope that isn't become a permanent situation. The first is, early on, I had mentioned to Captain Siemens and Chief Davis at that time about the operation of the warning lights at Northwest Military, which didn't seem to be operating correctly, and they said, and then they referred it to Tex dot to make sure they were operating. Along with that, I also mentioned that the walk light between, across South Winston, on the South Winston side of Northwest Military was not operating properly, that you push it and you couldn't get a walk signal. Recently, I've gone up there and seen that not only is that not operating, but the button on the church side of that is completely broken off. So we don't have a operating walk light, and it's, you know, sure, it's a small side street, but it is a school zone, and I think it's important that we have people, you know, obey the walk signals across there, because there's going to be a significant situation. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that the, there's a large number of the Basis students that are picking up their rides in the CVS Pharmacy parking lot. I personally counted about 50 students one afternoon that walked down there. I think this speaks to the, probably the inadequacy or the frustration, perhaps, of the parents of waiting in the queues in that traffic situation, and I don't know if CVS has complained particularly about this, but I think it's a, not in the best interest of Castle Hills to have our businesses impacted by these children that are supposed to be being picked up at the school site. And I also noticed that one parent actually pulled into Vision Source right next door, the CVS, and parked, you know, essentially double parked, so their kid could get in and out. So parking in a parking slot at CVS both blocks the paying customers, but it also is, you know, an impediment to the business next door that shares that common driveway. So I think this is just a continuing problem. It was noticed on the Ramsey School campus, and they eventually had to get somebody in there to shoo the parents out of the parking lots, because they didn't want to wait in line. I will note that I didn't see any Christian school students doing that same thing, and I think they're being good neighbors, and they're adhering to the fact that the, you know, that they're supposed to be picked up and dropped off on the school premises, not going there. There may be a smaller number of students that are also crossing Northwest Military Highway to get picked up in the subway parking lot, although I didn't, I have seen groups there, but I don't know what the actual counts are, but that's a particularly dangerous situation, of course, because there's heavy traffic, five lanes that are going on in Northwest Military. So I think we should, well, I just leave it at that, and say that I don't think it's a particularly good situation for the businesses in the city to have to bear that kind of impact, and it's also a school safety problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ackley. Mr. Van de Wally, would you please address that with Basis? Johnny, not sure what you can do on that, private property. Rick, would you get with Tex dot, make sure that, or whoever's in charge of those signs, that we get those fixed, please, and let us know within a reasonable amount of time, Thank you both for your comments, and we'll be following up at the next meeting, or they'll be following up with you as soon as possible. Okay, we're going on to the consent agenda. Item A is approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting on September the 12th, 2017. Approval of the minutes for the regular city council meeting on October the 10th, 2017. Approval of the minutes for the regular city council meeting on October 21st, 2017. You close the doors back there, please. Thank you, sir. Item C, approval of the minutes for the regular city council meeting on October 24th, 2017. Authorization for the city public service, energy, to install lightings at the Commons, acceptance of the treasurer's special funds report ending October 31st. Is there anyone who would like to pull any one of these items? Yes, sir?
E.
What? E.
I'd like to pull item D.
D? Okay. Let's go with D. Ms. McLean?
Well, I have a few concerns about the plan that's been proposed. There's an initial cost of approximately $3,000 that would provide service for five lights, and then a monthly lease that would cost approximately $225 a month, and we're committed to a three-year term, including maintenance by CPS. I'm assuming that these won't be anything like the current lighting that is at the front of the Commons, and I'm just worried, as we continue down this path, that the Commons is gonna continue to just look like trash as we piecemeal things on it, and the cost of $225 a month, surely there is another way we could put lighting at the Commons that wouldn't cost this much.
You want to address that, or I'll address?
Sure, Mayor. So regarding the, what they're going to install, it'll be galvanized steel posts, about 25 feet high, with a mast arm on it, with the lights that are listed there. We don't have any equipment that, if we were gonna go out there and put lighting in at that type of an elevation, we don't have equipment where we go out and do any maintenance on the lights whatsoever, so we'd have to rent equipment to do that. So the plan was that if CPS were to make the installation, provide all the maintenance, then it would be a, kind of a turnkey operation for the city to provide that?
Well, and part of my worry with this, too, is what kind of light fixtures? Is it the dark sky type light fixtures, where it's putting the lights down? I realize we need lights at the Commons, but I haven't seen a picture of the posts. I'm assuming they're the regular standard streetlights, and we've already got several light fixtures out there that have the fancy, not that that's necessarily what we need all over the city, but we're just going at something that, from a design, an aesthetic, and a pride standpoint, it doesn't look very nice.
Excuse me. Mr. Brennan, does this have to go through council?
Maybe not, Mayor, but I think it should go through the council.
You know, we've been talking about this for how many years now? And it surprises me that no one has stepped forward in order to get this done, and here we are, fooling around with it again, in order to do what kind we're gonna do, what kind of lampshades are we gonna do, what kind of this, what kind of that. I believe the city manager has the authority to do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have a question. I agree, we desperately need lights in that area. If the city manager is to do this, I'd ask that I could work with him, because I have installed these lights, both for my work and at my personal office.
Okay.
I have a question. What happens after the three-year term?
They become ours.
It's a lease period, and then it goes into another three-year term, and another three-year term, so you renegotiate the lease year after year after year, every three years. So I understand what Councilman McLean is saying, and Councilman Trevino. If you want to appoint a couple of council members, Mayor, to work with us on this, we'd be happy to have them, and that's why we put it before council, so that y'all are aware. You know, all we've heard is, we want to get the lights installed, and we want them installed quickly. What we've got out there now is not sufficient to provide for the safety of our residents when they're using the park after hours, and it's kind of a, Rick's done a great job doing what he can do out there with his in-house resources, but it's certainly, this would be a more professional finish. It will not match the acorn lighting, just to answer Councilman McLean's questions. It won't match the acorn lighting that you see on the streets, the decorative lighting. It is downward-directed lighting, so it doesn't allow light to escape out the top of the fixture. They're LEDs, they should be long service life, and should provide nice, good, clean, white light. It's a functional solution on a galvanized steel pole, it's not a decorative pole, this is, this is kind of the CPS standard solution. So, but if you wanted us to work with Councilman Trevino, Councilman McLean, that's fine. We were trying to get something installed sooner rather than later, but...
All I'd like to do is see some lights up. When I asked six months ago for one, somebody to bring it before council, and nobody did, okay? And we've got a problem out there, and in four weeks, we have Christmas again. So what I'd like to do, would you like to be on the committee, Amy, to decide what lights we're gonna put on there?
Sure.
Okay. What about you?
Can you repeat that, sir?
Thank you. I'd like to see council go ahead and appoint these two, although I don't think it needs to go before council, and within...
You can authorize a committee, Mayor, to, you know, make a final decision on it, if council is satisfied with that.
I like that. All right. I'm gonna authorize the committee to make final decision on the lights in the Commons, based on, Amy, your suggestions, and also, J.R., on your suggestions, and let's try to have them up within four weeks.
We'll do our best, so I'll work with Councilman Trevino, Councilman McLean, so we can get together by the end of the week and come to some kind of...
Let's move it to three weeks.
Okay, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Oh, it was plain as... Okay. So let's go on to item E, Mr. Gregory.
Why don't we have a treasurer's report?
So the treasurer's report was ready at about 5:30 this afternoon, and I did not have the time to sit down and review it with our finance officer, or with the department head, so we wanted to pull this item, Mayor, and we'll have it for the next council meeting.
Does this finance report also include the balances of the special funds?
Yes, it would, Councilman.
Then off the top of your head, do we have a special fund called the SAWs Interlocal Agreement Fund?
Mayor, I'm not prepared to answer questions about a treasurer's report that's not sitting in front of me.
Okay. Mr. Brennan? That question regarding the funds, when we're going to talk about funds on the report, which doesn't exist at this time, can we do that?
Not much to say, if nobody has the report.
Okay.
Question that can't be answered, I guess.
Well, do we have that fund?
According to the...
That can be answered.
According to the September 2017 account balance, there was a SAWs interlocal project listed on that balance.
So we do have that fund. I would like to get, to have this fund reported to the council as quickly as possible. I think the council may be surprised what they see, but I would like to have it presented before the council at, say, the next meeting.
Sounds good to me. Okay, so we're going on to the consent agenda, which was A, B, C, D. The two items were pulled, we discussed. Do you want to pull item E, then? And we'll just...
Yes, sir, it's not ready.
Okay. We'll pull item E. So this is, do I have a motion on A, B, C, and D as read?
Mayor, I have some changes for the minutes from September 12th.
Okay.
So on, this is for the regular meeting on September 12th, under Community Service, Hurricane Harvey Relief Project. In the first line, it says, Thomas McLean, Luke Danes, and Olivia Scott addressed the council and expressed their recent initiative. This was actually Castle Hills Elementary Schools initiative, not that of the three students. It was collectively done by the school. On the second page, under Old Business Number Two, Consider and Act Upon Ordinance Number This was regarding the second meeting. In the first paragraph of discussion under that, it should read, "After a brief discussion," and I read, I watched this part of the video this afternoon to make sure this was correct. "After a brief discussion, Councilmember Paul amended the motion to reflect a city council work session at noon on the fourth Tuesday of each month, seconded by Councilmember McLean." In the third, fourth paragraph, Councilmember Paul withdrew the time stated in his motion, and the discussion ensued. Under motion, it should read, "On the fourth Tuesday of each odd month," and those are the only changes I have.
Minnie, did you get that? Why don't you check with her afterwards, just to make sure that we correct that, and that everything was copacetic? Okay, so we have the consent agenda, A, B, C, D. Do I have a motion as read?
It's moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much, council. Under Old Business, Consider and Act Upon Resolution Number R2017-11-14-A, Adopting the Bear County Hazard Mitigation Plan, 2017. Chief Dover?
Thank you, Mayor, council. This was originally presented to council back in July. It was tabled because of questions by council. At that time, I offered to meet with council members and discuss their concerns or questions. I reached out to Scott Lampright with Bear County Office of Emergency Management, who at that time said he was happy to meet with us and, you know, can go over any questions or concerns. Reached out again, probably about a month ago, and the offer was still available. I then emailed everyone on council about two weeks ago, the plan again, and asked for questions or concerns with this. To go over, this is Bear County's, Bear County's plan is a multi-jurisdictional plan. Participating jurisdictions include Bear County, the City of Alamo Heights, Balcony Heights, Castle Hills, China Grove, Converse, Elmandor, Fair Oaks, Gray Forest, Halodus, Hill Country Village, the Town of Hollywood Park, City of Kirby, Leon Valley, Live Oak, City of Alma's Park, St. Hedwick, Sandy Oaks, Shirts, Chavino Park, Somerset, Tarrell Hills, and Universal City, Vaughn Army, and the City of Windcrest. These jurisdictions provided valuable input in the planning process throughout the plan. Bear County Planning Area refers to the entire planning area, including and all participating jurisdictions. The focus on this plan is to identify activities to mitigate hazards as classified as high or moderate risk, as determined through a detailed hazard-risk assessment conducted by Bear County and the participating jurisdictions. The hazard classification enables the county and participating jurisdictions to prioritize mitigation actions based on hazards which can present the greatest risk to lives and property in the geographic scope, or i.e. the planning area. The purpose of this plan was prepared by Bear County and participating jurisdictions with H2O Partners, Inc. The purpose of this plan is to protect the people and structures, and to minimize the cost of disasters, risks... the cost of disasters, response, and recovery. The goal of the plan is to minimize or eliminate long-term risks to human life or property from known hazards by identifying and implementing cost-effective hazard mitigation actions. The planning process is an opportunity for Bear County, the participating jurisdictions, stakeholders, and the general public to evaluate and develop successful hazard mitigation actions to reduce future risk of loss of life, damage to property resulting from disasters in the Bear County planning area. Bear County participating jurisdictions and planning participants identified 10 natural hazards to be addressed by the plan. The specific goals of the plan are to minimize the disruption to Bear County and participating jurisdictions following a disaster, streamline disaster recovery by articulating actions to be taken before disaster strikes to reduce or eliminate future damage, demonstrate a firm local commitment to hazard mitigation principles, serve as a basis for future funding that may become available through grant and technical assistance programs offered by the state or federal government. The plan will enable Bear County and participating jurisdictions to take advantage of rapidly developing mitigation grant opportunities as they arise, and ensure that Bear County and participating jurisdictions maintain eligibility for a full range of future federal disaster relief. In addition to that, this afternoon, I contacted some of our local neighboring cities to find out where they were with the plan and who had basically voted it in and not. I made contact with Balcony Heights, Chaveno Park, Leon Valley, Tarrell Hills, Alamo Heights, Converse, Halodus, and Kirby, all of which have voted the plan in. Almaz Park will be voting tomorrow at their council meeting on this plan. And then Hollywood Park and Universal City are waiting until the first of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Dover. Go ahead, and we'll, I'm sure they'll have some questions for you. Hang on just a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we accept the plan as illustrated by Captain Dover.
Okay. We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes, I'll...
Okay, Mr. Trevino? Okay, Mr. Gregory?
I've got a couple of questions. When the plan is voted in...
Yes, sir.
What happens, can the plan be changed?
Absolutely.
Is it changed by majority vote?
I know that we are set to meet again with Bear County, with the Office of Emergency Management, to basically discuss or go over those target hazards that were presented initially in presenting this to the county. And at that time, they can be adjusted, and we can make changes as deemed necessary. This was started last year, so a lot of these target hazards that, such as the ones that we presented, or other cities may have already been remedied or may have already been addressed by their representing cities, cities, excuse me, so they may have already been pulled from the plan. It's my understanding that these were presented to Bear County to show that we are actively looking at known hazards in our city and attempting to remedy them as we move forward in developing a plan. FEMA and the federal government want to see that we are attempting to take steps and actions to prevent damage to property, loss of life, and things of this nature. So by showing, and we presented seven items to Bear County, and it ranged everything from trimming trees and taking care of overgrowth in the trees and preventing some of that damage, to items that were actually pulled directly from the Streets and Drainage Committee, and target areas that we already know that we have the potential for flooding, and problem areas, and what we're doing to work to remedy that. This was presented, along with the other cities, as part of what we are planning for our future in trying to mitigate those problems as quickly as possible as the funds become available, or target problems that we do know that we have, that we might seek additional funding through grants and things of that nature.
If the city at any time decides it wants to pull out of this fund, or this plan, can they do so?
They could, sir, but I wouldn't recommend it. We would have to develop our own plan, then, at a cost to the city. This was done at no charge to the City of Castle Hills through Bear County. We are mandated by federal rules to have a hazard mitigation plan available and in place. Bear County actually took care of this and partnered. The idea behind it was power and number, if you will. Instead of Bear County approaching themselves and seeking the funds and the grants, they can show that they've partnered with 27 jurisdictions inside their area, and we are trying to remedy this as a whole, as opposed to separate entities.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Mr. Paul, did you have any questions or comments to the gentleman?
Not really. I visited with the chief, and we spent some time on a couple of the issues, and he certainly answered them for me at the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McLean, did you have any questions for the gentleman?
No questions. I read through a lot of the 695 pages and was extremely impressed with the detailed, just the analysis of all the different hazards that we could potentially experience, and some that you wouldn't think about. So thank you for bringing this to us.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Scott, did you have any questions or comments for the gentleman?
I want to say thank you so much for the thoroughness of this plan and for participating. I, too, read as many of the over 600 pages. I was impressed with the thoroughness. I was impressed with the number of issues pertaining to Castle Hills that are involved. And I just wanted to say thank you and good job for this.
Mr. Trevino, your thoughts?
Chief, thanks again for bringing this to us. It's my understanding that this would allow us to put a bigger spotlight on our flooding issues.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. With this, and as, if you read through any of the plan itself, this is to address and basically help to move us forward in seeking some of those state and federal funds to assist cities like ourselves that maybe don't have the funding necessary to move forward to adequately fix it, and allow us to pursue those through grants and different other available resources and remedy that. So I can't take full credit for this. A lot of this was done with Chief Riedel prior to his retirement. I did assist him, knowing that there was going to be somebody that had to take the place once this was in place. So I can't take full credit for that. Chief Riedel did have a hand in it as well, prior to me taking over.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Since Chief Dover won't brag on himself, I will. Not only that, I also want to take my hat off to the other department heads who have brought this forward. I think this is the most important piece of legislation that has come before us, probably in the, in this decade. In case you didn't notice, there's $500 million at stake here. We are right smack dab in the middle of a flooding program that we know is going to cost us by San Antonio. Their projections, $37 million to build a culvert in the areas that we all know need it. Johnny, thank you for your help. Rick, obviously, you were involved. But Dover, you were the one that brought it all, put it all together, and along with, who'd you say, Mr. Chief Riedel?
Chief Riedel, sir.
Oh, okay. That's right. All right. No, Chief Riedel was greatly instrumental in this, but you took it forward and pushed it over the goal line. So with that said, thank you. Okay, so, under Old Business, we've got to go for the vote. That's what I was talking about, getting ready to. Thank you. It's item one, which is Consider and Act Upon the Resolution 2017-11-14-A, Adopting the Bear County Hazard Mitigation Plan 2017. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor? Thank you, council. It is unanimous. Thank you again, Mr. Dover, Johnny, Rick. All right. We're going to move on to New Business, which is two. Consider and Act Upon an Ordinance Number 2017-11-14-A, Amending Chapter Two, Administration of the Code of Ordinances by Reverting to One Regular City Council Meetings on the Second Tuesday of Each Month. The mayor may also decide and call work sessions and our special council meeting as needed, effective January 2018. Mr. Paul?
Yes, originally, in September, I believe, I brought the motion to have a work session every other week for the second meeting of the month. And the reason being is it gives us an opportunity to discuss things. Well, it's gone from a meeting to another council meeting, and quite frankly, I think it's just convoluted. And we also, I have noticed, causing much more work for our staff. And I just think we need to go back to a council meeting. If we have these issues that we want to talk about in a work session, then the mayor can call that a particular session.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. I wanted to say one thing before we go into much more discussion on this. I think that we have covered this to the point where we have a state of ad nauseam. In case you don't know what that means, look it up. What that means is we've discussed this so many times that it is beaten to death. So unless someone really has a piece of information that we need to bring to the public's light, and thank you very much, everybody who pinged in, you can stop now. Thank you very much. Mr. Trevino, do you have any comments or thoughts on this? And be welcome.
Do we need to get a first to discuss it, Mayor?
Say that again?
Do we need to get a first to discuss it?
That might be a good idea. Do I have a motion to move this forward? Do we have a second to move this forward? Okay, we got a motion and a second on the table. Mr. Trevino, your thoughts?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Thank you. I would agree. We've discussed this quite a bit. I honestly prefer to have it set in stone and be done with it. As much as I love coming to the council meetings, it is extra for us to come here as well. But I believe that we need to do it, which is why I supported the idea of having a second council meeting. There's always something going on, believe it or not, and I think that having the opportunity to have a workshop for us to go back and forth and to discuss things that aren't necessarily action items is beneficial. I personally have several things that I would like to see discussed at the next workshop. I don't support going back to one council meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Scott, did you have any questions or comments regarding the item on the table?
Yes, my comments are, part of the reason this was brought up is because before this was enacted, I went back and looked at how many council meetings have happened this year, from January through September. That's nine months. There were 17 council meetings between the regularly scheduled meeting and specially called meetings. So when looking at it, in May, there were three meetings, regularly special, special meeting, and two specially called meetings. So if we've had 17 meetings in nine months, there's a definite need for two meetings every month on a regularly scheduled basis at the same time, every time. So by the, just looking at the past record of this year and the number of meetings we've held, the number of special meetings we've had to have called and had held, that we just need to go ahead and have a meeting every second and fourth Tuesday, regularly scheduled, because that's what we're having already anyway. But instead of having them regularly scheduled, we're having to special schedule them. So I think we need to leave it as it is.
Thank you. Ms. McLean, did you have any comments or questions regarding the item on the table, please?
Just further comments in line with Mrs. Scott's. The only months where we've only had one meeting were January and June. And in three months, we've had three meetings. Every other month, we've had two. So same thing. It appears there's a definite need because there have been a lot of special meetings. Both residents and council can count on having a meeting if we've got them scheduled, and it's part of our order. And as the ordinance was adopted, every other month, that second meeting will be a work session, which will solve the problem of us needing to discuss things.
Mr. Paul, do you have anything to add to that while we're moving down the road?
Again, I do not believe that it allows us the discussion meetings that we, that I originally hoped we would have. And that being said, if there are issues that need to be discussed, that's why my agenda item says that the mayor will call as needed. And if it's not needed, then it's not needed. And yeah, I'm concerned about being up here as much as we have been. I know the public's probably tired of coming and trying to stay up with us. I know our employees are getting a little burnt out. I know they hired for the job, and that's part of it, as did we. But I just feel like we did all right with one meeting a month for quite some time. Yes, sometimes it went an extra hour. Yes, sometimes it went a little bit longer than that. But as far as preparation, we have spent a lot of time up here discussing things just like this that we really don't need to be doing. So we can, I think we can cut our meetings shorter if we'll be more, it all has to do with brevity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Gregory, did you have any comments regarding the item on the table, please?
I agree with Mr. Paul.
Okay. Mr. Brennan, is it okay for the mayor to make a suggestion in regards to an amendment to this action?
Sure.
Okay. What I'd like to do is strongly suggest that council make an amendment to this, and since it's before council in the order of a, an ordinance, that we make these second meetings more clear on what we're doing. Basically, in other words, we have a regular meeting, we have a second meeting, and in that second meeting, we have no action items in the second meeting. What that would do is that would force us into a situation where the second meeting would, I think, go along a lot smoother. It would reassure the public that we're not coming in by dark of night and passing something that may be important to the public, but would allow them to get online and watch the conversations go back and forth. The only reason this is coming forward is because of the law regarding Open Meetings Act. Okay, that's the only reason this is coming forward. And I believe that what we've done is, I guess I'm riding the fence here on both sides, what we've done is we've allowed action items on that second meeting, which that wasn't, was the intent at all. The intent was to come and talk about items, and if the public was reassured that those items wouldn't be voted on and would come up again in another meeting as a quick pro-pro, did I say that right? Okay. A quick, yeah, okay, you got it. I think that they would be comfortable with that and with the second meeting. So I'm asking for the amendment, in order to make the second meeting of the month, that is a, you know, the second meeting after two weeks after the regular council meeting, nothing but discussion. Do I hear a motion?
In the event I'm the loser on my motion for my amendment, I mean, for my agenda item, I guess it would be proper, because if I'm going to lose, what the mayor just said makes sense. So I'm riding the fence here. I know what I think we should do. That's my opinion. But if we make an amendment, I guess we can go ahead and vote on the amendment that the mayor has put forth or suggested, or somebody has put forth, and then we still have the other one to vote on, correct?
I think you can do it either way. You can vote on the amendment if somebody offers it as an amendment.
Right.
And then you'll know where that ends up. Or you could take a vote on your motion, and if your motion fails, somebody could make a substitute motion, and that'd be considered.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you have something to say, Mr. Paul?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. VanderWally, can you give us the exact schedule so that we can all be under the same page?
What do you mean by exact schedule?
So the first meeting in the month is a regularly scheduled meeting, but on the odd and even months, the meetings vary for the second meeting, correct?
Right. Yeah, so I printed off a copy of what was passed last time. Let me read it to you. And, "Regular city council meetings shall be held on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month at 6:30 p.m., unless for another time or date by the city council. The meetings on the fourth Tuesdays of the odd-numbered months shall be work sessions to discuss and explore specific issues in depth without..." without any action to be taken. Special meetings may also be called as provided by law or city policies."
Thank you.
I would, this, uh, the work session that was supposed to happen on the second meeting in September, um, on that fourth Tuesday, the reason that it wasn't a, just a work session meeting as we had voted on is because a special meeting had already been called prior to that. So that's the only reason at that second meeting there were action items on the agenda is because it had been called as a special meeting. If the special meeting hadn't been called, then it just would have been a work session as we had planned and voted on, and that would have been planned. But because it had been called as a special meeting, that's the only reason there were action items on the city, on the agenda that evening, was because a special meeting was called. It was not because anything was done, um, different. It should have just been a work session, but it ended up being a special meeting with action items. Uh, I just wanted to clarify the council's recollection on the reason why that odd numbered month was not just a work session, it was a specially called meeting.
Okay, we'll go for broke here. How about, how about a meeting where, uh, on the second meeting, a motion for, on the second meeting, the mayor decides whether or not there could be an action item on the agenda?
You run into the same problem of the city not being notified that things are gonna be voted on. People know you're gonna have a vote on the second Tuesday of every month on items. It's up in the air. If you have, uh, another meeting and you vote on some things and don't vote on others, or the mayor can say we can vote on this. I mean, if, if you want consistency and clarity, you vote on items at the regular city council meeting the second Tuesday of the month. Everybody in the city understands that who pays any attention to it. And when you start moving in and having votes on peculiar days and partial work sessions, and perhaps special sessions, and perhaps this and perhaps that, no one's quite sure what's being voted on when. So you all can do whatever you want, but, uh, I think a lot of people would certainly like to have this one day out of the month in which the business of the city is voted on by the alderman.
It's clear from our schedule from this year that it's taken twenty city council meetings to get the work done. And so it's obvious that we need a second action meeting in some months. With the ordinance we have in place, we have set specific times when the citizens can know that we are here making action, we're making decisions. And once every other month, on the fourth Tuesday, we can come in and we can discuss all the crazy things that are on our lists of things that we need to discuss. But we have set forth something, it's obvious from the schedule from this year, before Mrs. Scott and I were elected and after we were elected, that there is a need for a second meeting in multiple months throughout the year.
Okay.
Oh, I have a, I have a way to, to make this simple and easy. I would like to make a motion that we have a regularly scheduled city council meeting on the second and the fourth Tuesday of every month, and both meetings are action meetings.
That's what, that's what's on the table right now. That's not correct.
No.
No, by, by voting the second meeting, I mean, if, if it dies, everything stays the same. And that's where we're at right now.
No, I'm admitting to every meeting being an action meeting.
I guess, I guess, I'm not smart enough. So do you get to, on the second and the fourth and the tenth and the fifteenth and the, which I, which meetings can you vote on?
That's why I'm saying, let's clarify, every meeting is a voting meeting, the second and the fourth. On the second Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday, we will have a city council meeting at six thirty. They are all action meetings, action can be taken at all those meetings. And it's clear to everyone in the city and on council that they're all action meetings. That's my motion to amend.
Okay, do I have a second on the motion to amend?
Just to clarify that the motion would be for the ordinance that is under consideration in front of us tonight, that we would add in language to where it reads, "Regular city council shall," "Regular city council meetings shall be held on these second and fourth Tuesdays of each month at six thirty P M, unless set for another time." We'd just add in the, "and fourth."
Second and fourth.
Then a second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second on the table. Do we need to go in any further on the, on discussion? Go ahead.
Is this an amendment to a motion?
Yes. Basically, what she did was she allowed, uh, action on every meeting that we have.
Her amendment to Mr. Paul's motion basically cancels up Mr. Paul's motion.
No.
Well.
It's amendment to.
Would have passed.
If it passes, then.
If it passes, we would now have two city council meetings every month, period.
Correct, and they would all be action meetings.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, so the action item failed on the, hey, wait a minute here.
The amendment failed.
The amendment failed, and it's the same amendment that I just, in other words, on your second meeting, you can't have action.
No, I said we can have action on every meeting, on the second meeting.
But it just failed.
But it just failed, yes.
So that means that no action can be done on the, on the other two?
No, no, no.
Okay.
No, it still stands as we passed it, where in the odd months, like this month, we're having a workshop in two weeks.
Yes.
And we get to discuss. This month would be a workshop. Last month was a voting meeting, the fourth Tuesday was a voting meeting last month. This month, we get to talk about issues we need to talk about, like lighting.
Okay, so every, every other month, there's gonna be two action meetings, and then the other month, there'll be no action meetings, it's just a workshop.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's time to call for a vote on my amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Let's call for the vote on the original item on the agenda. I'm gonna read it again, just so everybody knows. Consider an act upon ordinance number two oh one seven dash eleven dash, nope, wrong one. Okay. Consider an act upon ordinance number two oh one seven dash eleven dash fourteen A, amending chapter two, administration of the code of ordinances by reverting to one regular city council meeting on the second Tuesday of the, of each month. The mayor may call for work sessions and/or special meetings as needed effective January the twentieth. We had a motion by Mr. Paul and a second by Mr. Gregory. All in favor? All opposed? Item fails? Okay, we're moving on. New business, item number three. Consider upon ordinance number two oh one seven dash eleven dash fourteen B, approving the twenty fourteen certified tax rule and providing an effective date. Mr. Vandewoody, would you like to comment on that, please?
Yes, sir, the Texas State Property Tax Code, section twenty six point oh nine E, requires approval of the certified tax rule by the taxing unit's governing body. We received a, uh, letter from Albert Uresti from the Office of the Tax Assessor Collector for Bear County on the twenty-third of October, uh, including a summary of values and levies taken from the initial tax rule for the city of Castle Hills. And we are just recommending that council approve that, um, so that we can take care of this housekeeping item.
Okay. Uh, invite a motion on the item, please. Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Paul. All right, let's do a, uh, is this, do we really need to discuss this? Okay, all right. Did anyone have anything to say before I call for the vote? Thank you. All in favor? It is unanimous, thank you very much. Item number four, consider an act upon ordinance number two oh one seven dash eleven dash fourteen C, amending the building permit fee schedule for projects valued between five hundred and one dollars and two thousand dollars contained in ordinance number two oh one seven dash eight dash twenty-two A. Let's get a motion and a second on the table.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Okay, um, anybody wanna comment on this?
Do you want me to brief it for you, mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's, this is just a cle, cleaning up a clerical error from when we had the August council meeting and we discussed, um, at length, the fee schedule for the city. There was just a clerical error, and it's shown in your package. Uh, we raised the value for a basic permit for the value from one dollar to five hundred dollars to sixty dollars. And in the next category, um, we failed to change the sixty dollars, the fifty dollars to sixty dollars to reflect that change. So in effect, um, we, we're just cleaning up the, cleaning it up to make sure that we've transferred that over. If we didn't do it, somebody that's pulling a permit for somewhere between, uh, at five hundred dollars and one cent would pay, um, more than somebody, or pay less than somebody pulling a permit for five hundred dollars, if that makes sense. So it's just, it's just a clerical error.
Sounds good to me. Anyone have any comments or anything to state on that? Okay, all in favor? Thank you, it is unanimous. Announcements by city council. We're also gonna do something a little different here, we're gonna, we're going to announce the upcoming meetings, and then that way, maybe, uh, we can get a better handle on this. Okay, uh, Lighting of the Lights on Tuesday, it's an event that's, uh, um, traditional here in Castle Hills. It's on December the fifth at six thirty in the Commons. Get ready to see Santa, and I understand, did someone say there's gonna be some snow this year? Okay, well, we'll hold on the snow.
No, there is, there is gonna be snow.
There's gonna be some snow?
Yes.
Oh, well, good, okay, terrific.
Yeah, some wonderful residents have stepped forward and they're gonna make it snow at the, um.
Last year was a record year, I think we had, what, five hundred plus? And, uh, I'm sure we'll have another good year. Okay, uh, upcoming meetings, Saturday, November eighteenth, is the master plan meeting at ten thirty A M. in the community room. Monday, November twenty-seventh, is the board of adjustment meeting at five thirty P M. in the council chambers. Thursday, November twenty-eighth, is the city council work session at six thirty, council chambers. Now, is that a voting or a non-voting?
Work session, non-voting. Non-voting.
Non-voting. On Monday, December the fourth, the street and drainage committee at six P M., community room. On Tuesday, December the twelfth, city council regular meeting at six thirty P M. Uh, I'm gonna come back and talk about this in a minute. On Thursday, December the sixteenth, is a master plan meeting at ten thirty A M. in the community room.
On a Thursday, is that a Thursday? That's a Saturday.
The sixteenth?
That's a Saturday.
Okay. Saturday, it says Thursday here, but that's okay, we'll turn it to Saturday. December the sixteenth, master plan meeting at ten thirty A M. in the community room. Tuesday, December twenty-sixth, the day after Christmas, that is going to be a special city council meeting that was voting, but we canceled that.
And actually, that should be a regular council meeting per ordinance, not a special meeting.
Well, it was a work session. No, it was a regular meeting, you're right, I'm sorry, it was a regular.
Thank you, ladies.
Cancel, but it's been canceled.
We canceled that meeting. Okay, um, I wanna point out on December the twelfth, just so, just so everything, everybody knows, in case you're over the age of three months, there, there's a situation where Tech Dot wants to close, uh, Honeysuckle under the bridge, and it's, it's showed up in social media, we've had a lot of talk about it. Ms. Wiener, I think you sent out a letter regarding it. Uh, I think I sent one out, I think everyone sent one out. We're trying to get all the Castle Hills residents involved. Now, I understand, as the mayor, because I got a feeling, this is gonna be a full house on the twelfth. We're only gonna allow Castle Hills residents to speak. And I understand that I have the authority to do that, and so, so be it. Uh, the reason being is because we're concerned with what is, uh, going to affect our city. Okay? So I would suggest that everybody put it on your calendar, you'll be reminded a million times, but please, uh, come and, and show, uh, your feelings regarding this. Uh, I, very, very important item. Okay. Mr. Trevino, did you have anything for the public, please?
Yes, sir, mayor, uh, just echoing your comments, I just wanted to let everybody know that, uh, we already had two town hall meetings that have been hosted here, and it would be a good time for you to come because that's gonna be the, nearing the closing time for the comments. So if you have any concerns, questions, comments, you need to let Tech Dot know before it's too late. Uh, I've been in communications with our state rep and our state senator, and they both have offered their support, and they wanna hear from you as well. Uh, they should be, uh, at the meeting so that you can communicate with them directly.
Ms. Scott, did you have any comments or for the public?
The exact same comment, please come out December twelfth, please prepare to speak, let Tech Dot know um, how you feel about what they're planning on doing here in Castle Hills. I really am, I'm, I'm, what the mayor and, uh, Alderman Trevino has said, I'm begging you, please come, please speak, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McLean, did you have any comments for the public, please?
Same thing, bring your neighbors. We can, we can talk to people all day long, but with this particular item, I think it's going to take all of us talking to everyone we know and the power of numbers to show them that, um, this is a very important issue for our city. So please, talk to your neighbors, please get the word out. We are all one team. If we don't remain one team for this issue, then, um, we're not gonna get the best result that we can get. So we all need to work together, cause I think we all have a, the same goal on this issue.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Mr. Paul, did you have any comments for?
Yeah, I saw four council members and the mayor here at the last, uh, Tech Dot meeting, and it was disappointing, actually, that probably more than half of the people were here were from the surrounding neighborhoods, not Castle Hills. And by the same token, that's where we learned about the honeysuckle issue. So now that everybody knows about the honeysuckle issue, I would suspect that we will have several people that wanna voice their opinion. And I know everyone here that was at that meeting voiced their opinion to him, and they're, they're government, we do what we can, and we contact who we can, and we'll do what we, what we think is best for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Gregory, did you have any comments for the public, please?
Leaving on a lighter note, we have a resident who has a birthday coming up in about a week or ten days. She's going to be one hundred and three, Evly Moore. So in case you know Evly, you might stop by and wish her happy birthday, one hundred and three years.
Thank you, Douglas, I wasn't aware of that. Mr. Vandewoody, would you send some flowers out for the city, please? And, uh, if it gets questioned on who's gonna pay for it, I'll pay for it. Thank you. Okay. So let's, um, let's have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Have a second? Thank you, this meeting is adjourned. Everyone, I would like to, uh, out of respect for our employees, it's been a long day. If we're gonna visit, uh, I'm even gonna go out in the lobby.